Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'll call the June fourth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the West Richardson City Council to order at six P. M. Before we get started this evening, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Okay, roll call Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
Hey Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran. John Smart.
Here.
Joker.
Here.
And Councilmember Fettow requested to be excused tonight.
Have motion to excuse Councilmember Fettow this evening?
I move to excuse Councilmember Fettow second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carried, thank you, council. Councilmember Hayes, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, please?
Right to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes, appreciate that. Counsel, the agendas before you this evening, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing done, may I have motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Close like sign, motion carried, thank you, council, appreciate that. Moving on to presentations this evening, we have Mid Columbia Library Annual Report. We have Sarah and Mr. Schwan, Ms. Schwan from Mid Columbia Library here to present the Library District's two thousand and twenty-three annual report. So both our librarian and Ms. Schwan.
Yes, well, thank you. Yes, my name is Sarah Schwan. I am with the administrative offices of Mid Columbia Libraries and with me is Jason Bond from our West Richardson Library. And this is our report on the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year and how Mid Columbia Libraries serves the city of residents of West Richland. Next. So we completed a community needs assessment in two thousand and twenty-two and formulated a new strategic plan and a new mission statement using that data after listening to our constituents. And so our mission statement today is Mid Columbia Libraries empowers people, supports learning and strengthens community through literacy, enrichment and connection. Next slide. And so we recently, these are our three strategic focuses, literacy, enrichment and connection. We just did a customer satisfaction survey and I'm pleased to report some data back that we received from West Richland residents. And ninety-two point five percent of those who participated in the poll said that Mid Columbia Libraries helps their children read more. They also enjoy reading and are more confident in their reading skills. Eighty-eight point four percent said that Mid Columbia Libraries supports the learning and development of their children. And eighty-three point six reported Mid Columbia Libraries helping their children enter school ready to learn. Under the enrichment category, which is going to be our bread and butter, what we annually spend fifty percent on, which is our collection. We had ninety-three point eight percent say that Mid Columbia Libraries enhanced reading, viewing and listening for their pleasure. Ninety-one point three reported that Mid Columbia Libraries enhanced their lifelong learning. And ninety percent said that Mid Columbia Libraries provides books and contents that they want in a timely and accurate manner. And then as far as connection, which is a new strategic goal for us, we, a lot of what we found in the community needs assessment was people needed or said what was important to them was basic needs, housing, transportation, helping a lot of those different areas and areas that necessarily Mid Columbia Libraries is not equipped to serve with our budget. But we definitely want to be a resource for those looking to connect to those resources. So it's a new strategic goal. We are one year into it and we're still making strides in that. But you'll notice that these numbers are a little bit lower than what those previous two categories are. But we love having a starting point for data and then moving forward from there. So seventy-six point one reported that Mid Columbia Libraries connects individuals with services that meet their needs. Seventy-one point five reported that Mid Columbia Libraries helps them feel connected to their community. And sixty-nine point five felt that Mid Columbia Libraries provided quality public internet and Wi-Fi connectivity. Okay, next slide. So on the slider, a collection of words that really popped out in all the comments. There were a ton of comments, but these are words that people really felt. Many of them said that were highlights of the Mid Columbia, the West Richardson branch. Audiobooks, they love using homeschooling, our collection, Libby, which is going to be the digital version of, well, the app that you use to access our digital collection. Again, love to read, my kids love to read, I love to read, we're providing the resources to help them read and as well as save money, that came up a lot. So people are definitely using Mid Columbia Libraries rather than using different platforms to read books, audiobooks and that type of thing. And storytimes, staff and different resources, staff as a testament to Jason and his staff there. They are very well loved by the community. Next slide. So here are two quotes that stood out to me in the survey. But one of them being, I've been using the library for decades. It was a home away from home for me, a lifesaver. My education has been enhanced and my life made more enjoyable through the imagination employed while making my way through novels I choose. The second one says, my son has now checked out over ten thousand dollars worth of books and has an immense love of reading thanks to our local library. So we, on each receipt, I'll show it to you in a little bit later on the slide. But when you check out a book and you have a printed receipt, we'll tell you how much you've saved over the lifetime of your membership with Mid Columbia Libraries and what you've saved by using Mid Columbia Libraries. So the value of each item that you've checked out. And I'll also give you the grand total for West Richland for this past year. Next slide. So this is a slide demonstrating the direct operating costs, which is shown in red, but it's actually that lower dark section of three hundred and sixty-two hundred thousand. Indirect operating costs, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And then the value of our collection being in the West Richardson Library at any given time would be eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Next slide. So this is a breakdown that I provided earlier this year as far as direct operational costs. You can see that wages and benefits are going to be Mid Columbia Libraries' largest cost with the great staff that we have at West Richardson and across our libraries and then the other breakdowns as well. And that administrative cost sharing is going to be the copiers, more of that technology that we are always making sure, even though we have some goals and strides to make with as far as the public opinion of what our data and our computers are. That's going to be what that cost is, is the telephones, the data, internet, that type of thing. Next slide, thank you. So as I've mentioned before, West Richland, our branch continues to be the third busiest branch, whether you're looking at different data points such as collection usage, the amount of reference questions, the amount of people coming through the door. It's consistently a third, our third busiest branch. Routinely see it's eleven percent of our active users using that library. We have been doing studies against comparable libraries across Eastern Washington. And as a testament to Jason and his staff, this library checks out three times the amount of books that the comparables of similar sized libraries across Eastern Washington see. Of note, you gracious digital users in West Richland. Of over twelve hundred of them are strictly digital users. And then we had six hundred and eighty-three West Richland residents become new cardholders last year, which was forty-four more than the previous year. And then you can see, you know, coming out of COVID, we're continuing to see great strides in the amount of people who visit our West Richland Library. We are upgrading our technology later this year, so we'll be able to. The hope is that we'll be able to determine the size of the person on the branch, whether it's children attending a library event or an adult. So you can look to see, we're investing in greater technology for our gate counts. And you often are asking, you know, who is using the West Richland Library, whether it's people from outside the area or within West Richland. So West Richland residents have the option as a cardholder to use any of our twelve branches. And eighty-four point eight three choose to use the West Richland Library as their branch to pick up their materials. Kennewick being the second most popular and that's two branches combined into one. Pasco branches, and then you can see some of the smaller branches have less than one percent. Next slide. So of all the West Richland Library customers, twenty-one percent of them live outside the city of West Richland. And you can see where they do reside. So describing how our community moves around, you might work in one community but live in another. You can see where those other residents live. Next slide. So, you know, close to three hundred thousand items were checked out at the West Richland Library. And on any given day, as I mentioned before, we value the collection that is housed within the West Richland Library. Our, the collection is actually valued close to twelve million dollars and that includes digital and physical items, but the physical items that are in the West Richland Library total about eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty thousand, hundred thousand, excuse me. Next slide. So close to eight hundred, eight thousand people attended our West Richland events, which Jason can give more anecdotes and speak to on those. Next slide. And this is a chart that just shows how much participation and getting life back to normal post-COVID and how people are coming back to our branches, which we're very excited about. So our summer reading program is a great way to prevent the summer learning loss with local students and adults alike. But our current theme for the summer is, are you ready to believe? So cryptids are what you will see a lot of promotion on in our branches and activities and whatnot. Next slide. Here are some of the fun activities that we have going across, going on throughout the summer with that summer reading challenge, getting kids engaged in activities and active as well as in the library. Next slide. And so, yeah, as mentioned, we spent fifteen thousand or fifteen percent of our annual budget on the collection on our website, you can always suggest a title if we do not have that. If we are able to get it, obtain it, then we certainly will. We still, again, really, we've had tremendous amount of usage of people who weren't digital users prior to the COVID, moving over to Libby and using our digital collection that way. And we're very, very proud of our digital collection. We've long been investing in that as best as we can. We always monitor the hold times and so are able to add to it when we see that their hold times are really long. And then, of course, we still do curbside pickup for those who are busy and want us to personally, we can either suggest a title or you can say, hey, this is the genre that I like to read. This is the author and our staff will personal shop for you and provide you with a grab bag and curbside pickup. Next slide. So this is a very bad copy of our receipt that you get when you check out. But you can see that last year alone, West Richland residents saved four point four million dollars in using Mid Columbia Libraries and that's simply with our collection. It doesn't involve any of the programs, any of the lectures and that type of thing. So we are pretty proud of that and I think that's very apparent in the comments that people were saying in our community survey about the libraries, how much they appreciated the saving of the money and being able to read and increase reading in their families with the library. And that's all I have, but Jason.
So I have two orders of business. One is to let you know about an anecdotal story. We can look at all these numbers, but what does it actually mean? A true story that happened last month that really hit me right in the heart was we had a young woman come in, seventeen years old, she was living with her grandfather, she was going to the, what is the modified high school? You know, the thing where she's struggling in school, but she was doing the modified high school and alternative high school. And she had a resume, she said, hey, I need my resume, I want to apply for a job. And so we looked over resume and it was needing some adjustments. So we helped her adjust it. And this is one of those things where having local resources like the library help because to get over to work source is difficult for somebody who doesn't have a car. She lived near the library and she was putting in for a job. So we cleaned up her resume for her and she came in the next day beside herself happy because she'd just gotten a job at Little Moon Diner. So to go eat there and see her working, contributing to the city, contributing to a business, making her own money, learning some life lessons, it was a big deal. So it's really cool to see those things happening and those are kind of the small things that hide within those numbers. Second order of business is the news that I've actually been promoted to run the Kennewick branch. I have a background in larger organizational management from HP to the American Red Cross Blood Services. And so our community, community libraries director has asked me to go over there and get that library's customer service up to the standard that we've been seeing at West Richland. But I want to let you all know that we'll have an interim manager, our librarian Caitlin Walters, who is part of our collections department, she has stepped in to lead libraries before. And I've asked to be directly involved with the hiring of your replacement librarian and I'm going to make sure to mentor that person to keep the standards real high.
Thank you for that information, Jason. And but by golly, I don't think they said, read the fine print that they had to check with us to make sure that it was all right for them to steal our prize, Jason, from the West Richland Library. But I guess we'll, we'll have to address that next, next time we have a conversation. Congratulations to you, you've done a wonderful job, really enjoyed having you here. A lot of good things I've heard of you and what you've done as well as with your staff. So stay engaged, stay in touch and make sure that you can bring somebody that is as qualified as you are. We certainly appreciate that. Counsel, any questions of our library people? Kate?
Thank you, just clarifying what I'm wondering, on the one slide where you said that there were twenty-one percent of folks that visit West Richland are not from West Richland. And then under that, it had some higher numbers saying something like forty-one percent. Kennewick, is that of the twenty-one not from?
Twenty-one, yes. Kind of broke that down, yeah.
The math wasn't math and just wanted to make sure, thank you. It's good.
Mayor Pro Tim Bray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, Sarah, thank you very much for that informative presentation. I just have one question with regard to trying to get a feel for how many West Richland residents responded to your survey. Can you quantify that? Do you have that number?
Don't have it in front of me, but I will get that to you tomorrow via email.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm just curious what kind of response and if it's, if it's not a significant response, then we can do whatever we can to try to promote the next survey.
Sure, no, I believe we were going for statistically relevant data, but I'll make sure to get you that, that number, that accurate.
And thank you again for the presentation.
And if there's anything that is in that present or the, the survey that doesn't fall into your category like water, sewer, roads and stuff like that, if you want to shoot that over to, to Eric as well, we'd be interested to see exactly what those comments were, you know, shared information is always nice to have.
Got it, I do not believe there were any. I looked them all over, but if there are, I will send them right over. All right.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you guys, the comments, I'm in the community a lot and interact with the schools and everybody and you guys have done an amazing job to turn the library around and, and we're headed in the right direction and I appreciate everything that you guys have done and how many people are involved and it's got so many community people involved in all the, the different activities you have during the summer for the kids. So I just want to say thank you, it's, it's appreciated.
Awesome, well, and you know, as we were looking to continue to make strides in that connection department, if there are areas in which the library can connect with the community, if there's organizations that we need to make sure that we are aware of, please be sure to pass that along to either me or Jason or the new branch manager.
Anyone else, counsel? Again, thank you again this evening for coming, taking some time out of your schedule, we appreciate it. Thank you. Amen, thank you. All right, counsel, that brings us to the consent agenda this evening, which includes approved the minutes of the regular meeting, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Resolution thirty-eight, twenty-four, authorizing a mayor to execute amendment number two to agreement for beneficial use of biosolids with Natural Selection Farms LLC. Resolution thirty-nine, twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement for field maintenance services with Greater Richland Little League and Integrity Lawn Care LLC. Resolution forty, twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase and sales agreement with Three M Investments LLC for lot number A, ROS number fifty-nine, sixty-one. Resolution forty-one, twenty-four, authorizing the mayor to execute the second amendment to the sales and purchase dated, agreement dated ten, five, twenty-twenty-one with Benton REA regarding lot number five, ROS number fifty-four, ninety-six. Motion to authorize a Public Works Trust Fund loan application for sewer lift station project and motion to authorize Public Works Trust Fund loan application for water meter replacement program. And is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one in house, Stephanie, do we have anybody virtually? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Counsel, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries unanimous, thank you, counsel. Now I move to our first opportunity for citizens, public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. And with our upcoming advisory vote in August, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Jessica Foltz, to provide some additional information regarding speaking during council meetings about the cannabis topic. Jessica, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was recently brought to our attention that now that our advisory vote on cannabis has been approved for the August ballot, allowing public comment in support or in opposition of that topic at council meetings could result in a violation of the RCW, specifically RCW forty-two, seventeen, A five, fifty-five, which prohibits public agencies from allowing use of their facilities in campaigns. So pretty clearly, this would pertain to council members advocating or speaking in opposition to a ballot proposition, but the Municipal Research and Services Center has indicated that they were told by the Public Disclosure Commission, who is the agency charged with enforcing the law, that the law also requires agencies to prevent campaigning during public comment periods of meetings. So I think most of us, this seems a little surprising. So I did make several attempts to contact the PDC just to verify that this is in fact the case. I was unable to hear back from them, but given MRSC is a reputable source on municipal law, they indicated in a written post on their website that they had been informed by the PDC that that could be a violation. I would just recommend, Mr. Mayor, that we ask the public not to discuss the topic of cannabis sales at our public meetings in order to avoid the potential for a violation until the vote is taken.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. So with that, if there's anybody who'd like to provide comment this evening for items not on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to provide your comments. See no one in house, anybody virtually like to provide comment this evening related to items not on the agenda? Raise your virtual hand or star nine to be identified. I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
Not.
With that, counsel will go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Item eight, A and B are a public hearing and a resolution to adopt a two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty-six year transportation improvement program. Roscoe, would you like to provide your staff report this evening?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. On an annual basis, the Public Works staff updates the city's six-year transportation improvement plan to be consistent with the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan. The program outlines the funded and planned capital improvement projects throughout the city. Projects listed on the program are eligible for state funds, federal funds and the city's transportation impact fee funds. Cities are required to adopt the program on an annual basis before July first. The public has a couple of opportunities to make comments on the plan before it's submitted to the state. The first is the public meeting tonight at city council. The second is a regional public meeting that the Ben Franklin Council Government will schedule. It hasn't been scheduled, but typically the first week of September. It'll be at a public place, usually a library somewhere in the tri-cities. So you can see all the regional transportation projects. So you have multiple opportunities to provide comments on this before it is actually submitted. The twenty-five, twenty-thirty tip, hard to say twenty-thirty. There's not a lot of changes from last year's six-year tip to this year. One project was removed, that's the Paradise Way Pavement Preservation Project that was awarded earlier this year and will be constructed before the end of the year. We did add Kennedy Road widening. This is from the intersection of Keen Road and Kennedy to the Dallas-Bommin Range Kennedy Intersection. Portions have already been widened with development and, but this would finish that portion off. And then the last month, there was the Paradise Extension Project Phase Six, which was modified. The terminus was shortened, we had a developer construct part of that with a multifamily development. So we just, a couple of minor modifications for this year's six-year tip.
Thank you, Roscoe, appreciate that. With that, I'll open the public hearing at six twenty-five and we'll hear in-person comments first. If anybody would like to make comment to this agenda item, public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes. I see no one in house, so move virtually, if anybody would like to make comment on public hearing, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by your phone to be recognized. No one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
Not see anyone, no.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing at six twenty-five. And resolution forty-two, twenty-four, adopting the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty-six year Transportation Improvement Program, counsel, may I have a motion?
I move to pass resolution forty-two, twenty-four, adopting the city's two thousand and twenty-five, twenty, 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 thirty-six year Transportation Improvement Program.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, counselor, any questions that have not previously been addressed by Mr. Slade this evening, should like to ask? May, is that an old card? I'm sorry, that's fine. An old card. Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve? Or excuse me, all in favor say aye.
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 Close like sign. Motion carried, thank you, counsel. Okay. Moving on to eight C is an ordinance amending the West Richland Municipal Code and the use of motorized vehicles within parks. Again, Public Works Director Ross Slade, your staff report this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this before you is an issue that was brought to me, my attention by the code enforcement or code compliance officer. She had received complaints about people driving golf carts, other vehicles on the playfields and was concerned about it, contacted the code enforcement officer about, you know, correcting that behavior. And we found out that our signs and code only prohibit motor vehicles out on the playfields. And so I got educated on the RCWs and the multitude of other vehicles that are defined. And so that we don't have to bring this back, I got basically added everything on that bullet one in section twelve, twelve, oh, three, oh, not just motor vehicles, but golf carts, non-highway vehicles, all-terrain wheel vehicles, motorcycles, off-road motorcycles, mopeds, neighborhood electric vehicles and snowmobiles would not be allowed outside designated parking areas in the parks and allow our code compliance officer to correct this behavior in our parks. So that's what's before you. It did go to the park board and have a discussion on that. And so they, the park board recommends approval. I think at the last council meeting, there was discussion about cannabis being prohibited. Little more research needed with that, with the state laws of that. So that couldn't put it together to get that tonight, but working with the city attorney on adding that language at a future council meeting. So it didn't, state law doesn't match with city and Jessica, I mean, did I say that right with?
So state law preempts punishment for drug offenses and technically the use or consumption of marijuana in public under state law is a fifty-dollar infraction. Our park rules violation is a three hundred and fifty-dollar infraction. So we just need to figure out how to marry the two of those and adopt, we should probably adopt by reference to RCW so that we can, officers can cite people if they're doing that anywhere in the city. So those will be coming as we do some more research.
Thank you for that explanation, Jessica. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? I see no one in the audience, virtually star nine or raise your virtual hand to be recognized to address this agenda item this evening. I see no one virtually, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone virtually, no.
Counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt ordinance eleven dash twenty-four relating to park property regulation of use, amending section twelve, twelve point oh, three, oh, the West Richland Municipal Code.
A second.
Motion in the second, counsel. Any questions to Roscoe that haven't been addressed? Any staff report or explanation from Jessica? We'll start down here. Kate Moran, Kate, council member.
Thank you, yes. I'm wondering, I just had to look up because I thought I knew what it said, and I don't apparently, for the neighborhood electric vehicles. This then would not include motorized bicycles. So the bicycles that I know I walked, talked with the shelter and sometimes will speed past at like twenty-five, thirty miles per hour on the levee over there. So that's one thing that I would be concerned about here, if it's not included there.
Yeah, that's correct. Electric bikes that are street legal would be allowed in the parks. So those are the ones I think that are allowed up to twenty-eight miles an hour.
The non-street legal ones are the bicycle with the motor that's been bolted onto it.
Like the lawnmower, yeah.
Councilmember Bloom?
I was happy to see that. Although, I mean, from the standpoint that a lot of people are using, especially those that just can't get it moving to start, the electric bike is a great assist. But I wasn't clear as to whether, I mean, the code for the neighborhood talks in terms of the twenty and twenty greater than one mile over twenty miles per hour. Or I guess the question I have is, are motorcycle, motorized bicycles allowed to go over twenty miles per hour in state? Chief?
I'd have to look at that law. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Well, they come with a limiter and you can bypass limiter and then go above it, but some states allow the twenty and some don't.
It's my understanding that there's, there is, they can only power themselves to twenty miles an hour. But.
No, I can, I can trip mine.
Yeah, just the power itself. But if you want to go into high speed and then downhill, you can get rolling. I'll let Jessica or Stephanie ask that one.
I don't know if I know what you mean, hard. I just don't want me to.
Yeah, your name card, there you go. We got to get you one of those.
Yeah, I know. I, when I was with Kennewick, we looked at putting a speed limit in our parks for this reason, right? And I think Richland has one too. It's like ten miles an hour if there are people in the vicinity. So that is one option if you have a concern about that, because they do, there's three different classes actually of e-bikes. And the fastest ones can go like twenty-eight to thirty miles an hour. So that's something we could talk about in the future if that was a concern.
Yeah, if something like that comes up. Certainly would want to, would want to stay region-wide in the discussion in regards to that because that's some of the things that we have talked about in some of our city manager county administrative meetings and the the lime and the different people that wanted to come in and bring electric scoots and stuff like this. And you try to cram the baby carriage, the kids, the strollers, the skates, the bikes, it can get a little busy. So if that, it's something we need to address when it becomes a problem, we'll address it at that point in time. Councilmember Smart?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I'm not opposed to what's on the on our docket tonight to approve specifically the this regulation use section concerning vehicles. However, like has been pointed out, there are a number of things that, having this brought to our attention, and we all got to read the park ordinance here, I see a number of issues with the wording and the intent and other problems that are going to arise, not the least of which is the comments on, you know, the use of any intoxicating substances, whether they be marijuana or alcohol. But also, I see faults in, like the language in number six, where I won't go into it because it's not relevant for tonight, but it's relevant for a request that that either Roscoe Subcommittee or Eric's or the park board maybe reevaluate this entire section because there are things that don't make a lot of sense to me. So for example, the, let's see where to go, number, I guess it's number thirteen, actually. You know, it states about using a leash and then it says exemptions, but then all the stuff under the exemptions are not really exemptions. They're actually additional, not exemptions. So I just like, there's some, some engineering of that paragraph that needs to happen, I think, to just make it a little better. The intent is good. Other things like, you know, no destruction of vegetation and no golfing. I certainly agree with no destruction of vegetation, but but golfing isn't the only thing that destroys vegetation and why call it out? And maybe we just need to be a little more specific there. Or maybe golfing is a thing that you're just not allowed to do regardless of whether you destroy vegetation. I don't know. As I read through this, I just, like I said, I will stop here, but there are at least a half a dozen things that I read in this ordinance that, that just didn't really seem to be as good as they could be. And so I would encourage us to take a careful review and maybe, maybe bring it forward again, especially when we get the right language in there for use of any intoxicating, you know, things. So.
I would, I would probably take golfing as a, as a hard, small object flying at a high rate of speed in an unknown direction as a reason for that one.
Perhaps, yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yeah, I would follow up. I'm not, I'm not as in tune to where we are in the regulation. But would this apply to our, do we consider our trails, the park, you know, these, these would apply to the park? Currently, we have signs up there saying no motorized vehicles on the, on the trail system. And maybe we need to change the sign to say, well, I don't know. Well, you know, think about that. When, when we're revisiting this whole fiasco.
Let me just add real quick, I'm sorry.
But, but, I mean, just clarifying that. And what's kind of nice is they call out in the regulation, electric assisted bikes as being exempt.
Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, I will say when I was reading the RCW on vehicles, they did, I was concerned that maybe this included electric wheelchairs, you know, and mobility devices, but fortunately those are exempted in the RCW. So just to let everybody know. Those at least are correctly brought out.
Oh, very good. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We have no unfinished business this evening, nor do we have any new business. So this is, well, yes, sir.
So, so we did sort of have a new topic brought before us with this reading from Jessica. And I was just wondering if we would have an opportunity to publicly think about that question. I have some questions about it.
And we'll get to that during public, or the council comments or questions or concerns.
That's, that'd be fun.
You can address it.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Your comments at that point in time. So with that, it leads us to the final citizen public comment this evening. If you'd like to make comment to counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then we'll remind you of the Jessica, our legal advice in regards to potential sensitivity in regards to campaigning or promoting or, or not promoting. And, you know, it's a fine, it's a fine line issue, and I just wanted to try and make sure that we don't potentially have our city set for a potential liability or violation of an RCW. That's the reason that we've brought it to attention today because it was brought to our attention from an anonymous source. Anybody this evening? Please come podium, state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Davies, thirty-seven oh six South Lake Drive in West Richland. And I know I can't ask it as a question, but just a clarification around that rule around campaigning. Does that mean public comment, as long as it doesn't say or indicate vote yes or vote no, is acceptable to be expressed about a topic or not? That I just have a comment or a question or uncertainty about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Cindy Rentsh, I'm at forty-one hundred South Lake Court. And I, I appreciate the conversation you're going to have about that. If, if I could know where on MRSC's website you found that, I looked and I couldn't find that. So if I could find out where that's at, but also I just want to make sure that does not include any letters to the council. Those are still permitted and included in the packet. Okay. I just wanted to verify that. But if I get a clarification on where is it?
We might, what we may also do is just put out some basic information to give the, the public an understanding of the position that the city has been brought to our attention. Yes, public comment. I know we don't have interaction back and forth, but it's legitimate public comments as far as letters to the council members, to the staff, anything like that, that's, that's, does not apply.
Right, because I appreciate, this is something, this is a new twist that has never come before, and so it's quite interesting.
And actually, we just saw that it was May of fish, or was it just this year, this particular item came to the legislative body.
Okay, thank you.
News to everybody. All right. So anybody, anybody else in house? Seeing no one, we'll go to anybody virtually this evening. Raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. Seeing none, go ahead. And Stephanie, do you see anybody?
I do not.
So we'll go ahead and move on to staff, council announcements, reports, and comments. And we'll go ahead and start with staff this evening. Staff, do you have anything for us? Chief Gregel?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Short and sweet tonight. We got approved for two more grants. Obviously, you guys did the consent agenda on a couple of those, just putting in for them. One is a thirty-six thousand dollar grant for a new radar trailer for the city. Ours has been pretty rusted out. It's been hanging in there, but it's about to go. But so that's, that's wonderful news. And the other grant is for the wellness grant that the state has been putting out now for a couple of years. We got fifty-four hundred dollars for additional wellness checks for our officers physically. So that's pretty exciting news. I just wanted to share that with counsel tonight.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. And Stephanie?
Mayor, I just wanted to announce to the council that the July second council meeting has been canceled. So if you were planning to be out of town that week, go ahead and make those plans.
If you weren't, go ahead and make those plans. Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate that. And then we'll move on to council's comments, reports, and there may be interaction with Jessica on this too, I assume. Councilmember Bloom?
Well, I just wanted to say I spent the afternoon doing virtual interviews for new Ben Franklin Transit General Manager. I believe we have a good selection of people to choose from, and so hopefully we'll be having that come forward. Also, I attended the Yakima Basin Fish Wildlife Recovery Board meeting in Yak, in Yakima and actually relatively good news, a few more fish going up the river. But still not, not. It's sort of humorous, not humorous, perplexing that we had in, I think it was two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, large increases. And then it just crashed. And so there's still a lot of, we had a presentation from YBID. And there's still a lot of, you know, discussion about the removal of causeway at the, at Bateman Island, which would cool the water at the mouth of the Yakima, which is a good thing, but that is on hold pending sampling of all that sludge that's upstream of it, which would go into the Kennewick and Pasco water supply. So it's a, you know, good, bad indifference. I, I am concerned about losing our neighbors, losing quality water, especially with the recent announcement of Kennewick detecting the I would call them polyphenols, but, but anyway. Since that's just Columbia River water, which is still what Richland brings into us. I, hopefully that I realize my past history is on the, nothing personal, Jessica, but on the totem pole of life, one notch below, below lawyers or chemists. And so I never believed the, the results of chemistry. Anyway.
You have to have an attorney explain it to you, I'm afraid. Okay. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I apologize for not being at the previous meeting. I was at a work event. And at the next meeting, I will be in Vancouver, Washington for an Association of Washington Cities event. So I will not be available at that meeting either, and I apologize in advance for my absence. But again, as always, I appreciate the fact that we put our meetings online so that we can watch them after the fact and make sure that we keep up with what was said at council. So thank you again for that. I will note that I did end up finding on MRSC's page, if you look up the title, supporting slash opposing ballot measures and candidates, it's further down on that page. I had to look myself because I was kind of shocked. But yeah, other than that, looking forward to Ben Franklin Council of Governments meeting right after our next meeting, which since I won't be at that meeting, I'll just say it now so that anybody knows that it is, of course, is always a hybrid meeting on the twenty-first of June, for those who would like to watch the Ben Franklin Council of Governments meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. Appreciate what you do with AWC as well as Mayor Pro Tim Brink and his commitment, as well as Councilmember Feto as well. So yeah, very well represented AWC.
I just, sorry, at note, since he is not here, I will say that Councilmember Feto, along with Councilmember Blanche Barajas from Pasco are actually both applying for a position on the AWC board. So I'm, I'm excited. Either one of them would be amazing, preferably Councilmember Feto just because of West Richland, but then we don't want to look like we're taking over AWC, just like most other organizations around here lately.
Thank you. Councilmember Smart?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I was, you know, just, just read this before the council meeting, the letter from Jessica, which she commented on regarding this change in two thousand twenty-four to RCW forty-two point one seven eight point five five five, which I've now read. And I have some questions or some clarifying questions about this. I, I don't think anything stated in her letter is incorrect. But I do think that it leaves, it requires a second and third reading, is what I've found, to really understand. What I'd like to do is maybe have the opportunity to ask Jessica or maybe just state my questions. You can choose to answer them or not. In the second or third reading here, it indicates that comments, at today's meeting as well as upcoming council meetings regarding the advisory vote is, is the, is the, is the point here. So these comments that we're talking about would be regarding the advisory vote. And then further, it says, no elective, elected official, dot, 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 may use or authorize the use of any facility of a public office or agency directly or indirectly, dot, 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 for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition. So my question would be, that, I guess I have a question. Does this prohibit a general comment, for example, in the case that seems to be prevalent in West Richland right now? Would this prohibit a comment on an opinion concerning the use of cannabis?
The law is not entirely clear on that. I think that the risk is that someone makes a PDC complaint against the city, right? I don't know if someone just said, I don't like marijuana, doesn't talk at all about sales. Would that violate the PDC regulation? I don't know that. But certainly saying. But certainly saying, you know, I'm advocating all citizens to vote against this, or I want as many pot shops as I can get in West Richland. That's a pretty clear violation, assuming that it does apply to the public comment section. So I obviously just give you the best advice I can. But the law is not entirely clear. And when I'm looking at enforcement decisions from the PDC, most of them are against people, you know, you're running for city council and you say, and everyone vote for me, right? Or someone from the audience says, I want you to vote for Ken Stoker. But, you know, this MRSC opinion, and I think Councilmember Moran is pointing out the one that I looked at also, it's a twenty twenty-one blog post from Steve Gross. Is, is pretty clear. And so I can't in good conscience not tell council about that.
Right. I, I sort of see this as like not being allowed to poll at, at, at a, at a voting, at a place of voting, or a campaign at a place of voting, a poll, at a, at a poll. So because that is a direct, you know, influence on a voter that shouldn't be. And, and in this case, we certainly should not be using, certainly the council should not be using public property to advocate for or against a specific measure. However, I certainly hope that this doesn't quell our freedom of speech to voice opinions in general about any topic without getting specific and saying, please vote for or please vote against the upcoming ballot measure. I think that to go any further than that would be a really gross violation. And as I read the, the actual law, there is, it says, for example, in the last, the last sentence of the last paragraph says, however, this does not nor, this does not apply to the following activities. And there are a number of exceptions, which are very purposefully stated, which I don't think would prevent our residents from coming up and being, and expressing opinions like we've heard in the last few weeks about the detrimental acts of speeding at seventy miles an hour down Van Geesten, or maybe using illicit drugs or using even legal drugs. Or whether or not, you know, they should walk a dangerous dog down the street. I mean, there's all kinds of opinions that can be expressed about a lot of things, which this does not prohibit. And if it does, I really want to hear that because at that point, we have a little bit of a constitutional crisis going on. That, that's why I want to make clear, because what I don't want to do is quell our citizens from having the opportunity to voice their heartfelt opinions about any topic for or against with this kind of statement. So I mean, I think what I said originally, what you've written is not incorrect, as far as I can tell. So I, not that you need my endorsement, but I'm just saying, like, it's not incorrect, but it does come across rather prohibiting on purpose.
That's how lawyers operate.
Yeah.
Risk averse.
Yes. So, but we have to be careful what we say to our citizens. I don't want it to go overboard. So that's what I'm trying to point out here is that there are exceptions, like for example, if this topic is, is, I think it said, clearly stated on a, on a, on an agenda item, you know, it can be discussed. And opinion on the topic either for or against a certain advisory vote, maybe or maybe not. That's, I just thought that there's exceptions that we need to also address if, if that's relevant.
So I don't believe any of the exceptions are relevant, and this is why. So what's interesting about the law is, you know, it's, it's very concerned about public citizens or anyone using public facilities to campaign. And yet it allows a council to adopt a resolution in support of or opposed to a ballot proposition, and then would allow public comment. So certainly we're not, that's not what we're talking about here. So, you know, there are these nuanced exceptions. One of the others is, and this, I looked into this initially, activities which are part of the normal and regular conduct of the officer agency. Well, public comment section is part of our normal or regular conduct. But I don't know how we marry that with then a pretty clear indication from MRSC that the PDC has said, well, no, you can't just let people come and campaign at your council meetings. And I, I'm going to continue to try to reach them, to try to hear it from the horse's mouth. The other question here is, this is an advisory vote. The, the county, the county is treating it as a ballot proposition, so we have to go by that. But this type of action is not really counted for in state law because it's, it is allowed to us from an attorney general opinion saying cities have this authority. So for that reason, the law is fairly vague. My job is to be as careful as possible, right? And we are allowed to put reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on speech if it's viewpoint neutral. And just like if someone was campaigning for a pot shop, that would be prohibited as well, right?
Another thing I'll add too is, is I've heard a number of times from the audience, and I, I follow this under a campaign aspect of it, is, is any individual that is taking note of how council votes will take note in the next election. To me, that's a campaign. That's a gesture of, you do this, I'm going to do that, you know, type deal. So, and I think Jessica would agree that that falls into that same category as far as that goes. So there, there's a lot more information on MRSC that breaks down specifically of different things. That was MRSC you and I were looking at earlier this, today, Roscoe. Yeah. And, and it really gets deeper into the weeds of this RCW. So you might take a peek at that and then help answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I will. And I would like to, I would like to hear a clarifying comment on our, not tonight, but at some point in the near future, on specifically if you are a citizen sitting in this audience, and you want to make a comment about the detrimental effects of driving at seventy-five miles an hour down Van Geesten. And if we had an advisory vote, for example, on the speed limit on Van Geesten, I'm trying to avoid the more sensitive issue evidently here that's, that's everybody knows about. Can they talk about that? Or can they not? Can they say, hey, I had a cousin that was killed in a car accident. They were only going ten miles an hour over the speed limit. I mean, can that information be brought to council? And not be held against them in the case of our upcoming advisory vote and that topic?
Well, I guess I, I do want to be clear that a PDC violation would be against the council if, if it were determined that we were, that the council was allowing public comment. So private citizens that aren't running for office are not subject to the PDC. It's, it's, the problem is us allowing use of our publicly funded facility to allow campaigning. But the second thing I would say is, you know, I will look and see if I can find more enforcement decisions through the, through the PDC to see if they kind of weigh in on, you know, how much leeway someone has, or what is campaigning, what isn't. But that's one of the questions that I emailed the PDC to ask about because it's not a bright line issue. And, you know, I would feel better if they said, oh, sure, just don't say vote for this or vote for this, but you can talk about a related topic. Then I would advise accordingly, but I just, it's been difficult to get ahold of them.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, I just think that I also don't know how much control, you know, a, a sitting council has over somebody who comes to step up to the microphone. I mean, five words can come out pretty quick.
That's what I asked Jessica to follow up on her opinion.
Yeah. So I, I just don't, I think that.
Puts everybody in a difficult.
It does, right? And so I, I think that this is, well, I just think it's going to require a little more clarification because I'm pretty certain. Now, here's another question. Sorry to take up so much time, but this is another issue. Prohibits the use of public facilities to support or oppose candidates or ballot issues. So what happens when we get citizens emailing us who are expressing specific opinions or even logical reasons to oppose or support some, some, some action? I mean.
That's not, that's not in the chambers in a, in a public meeting.
So, so email is not necessarily included in this? Is that right or not?
I mean, the list is fairly broad, but you know, really the intent of this is that we're not printing off brochures advocating for a particular position. Does the passive receipt of an email, is that a use of city resources? I, maybe someone could claim that. I think that's much less of a concern, you know, than if we have campaigning going on at council meetings or, you know, things of that nature. So the, the degree of use.
Or, or heaven forbid a response to such an email? And now, sir, are you saying that as a council member, I can't sit here and say that I hate the use of marijuana? And that it's personally affected friends of mine? Can I say, I'm not saying nothing about the advisory vote. Can I not say that? I mean, can I or can't I? Because if I can't, I will never say it again.
Let's, let's get some further research because we obviously don't have the answer right now because the PDC, you know, they say, ask, ask us first. Well, she's tried since Saturday to ask them and they have yet to respond. So.
I, I appreciate that.
Let's, let's see what, what we come up with and we'll, we'll get back to circle around back to you next go around.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're more than welcome, sir. Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to relay what I've got back from the Washington State Veteran Affairs Office with our Veterans Cemetery Town Hall meeting. They were all very impressed with the turnout. We had standing room only for it, and they were impressed with Chief Greggo and the facilities. And it was just, it just all came together so well. And, and so we're moving forward. Our next project is to deal with the land and finding us a piece of land. So I'm sure I'll be reaching out to Eric and Adam from the, the county because we sure want it in our area. But it was just so, it, it just felt so good. And everybody was so positive and we had so many veterans there, so many businesses and everybody that stood behind us and said, we gotta move forward. So I've had lots of emails since that from Olympia and from Spokane Medical Lake Cemetery. So we look forward to be in a main park moving forward on this project, and I'm sure it's going to happen here. I'm positive it's going to. And I just want to thank everybody that was involved and was part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Short follow-up for Mr. Bloom before I come to you, Councilmember Stoker.
Just, just past experience with the PDC, what I would suggest, you did send him an email, but the PDC, I have traveled to Olympia to appear before them to express myself. I've gone electronically to the PDC. I would suggest that you find the next PDC meeting, which can be attended electronically and ask the question at the PDC because there is, when, unless they're meeting, they can't do anything. There is nobody at the PDC. So, I mean.
I talked to one man who referred me to someone. He said, I can't answer that question. I'll send you to Ashley.
But nobody, nobody, they're useless. They are the totally most useless organization. And so unless there's a PDC meeting going on actively, you will not get an answer.
They'll probably listen to this meeting and really look at your PDC filings for the next.
You want to, you're right.
Councilmember Stoker?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And yes, I, I too, hopefully we get a response from the PDC on this, or you can make contact with them. I just wanted to let everyone know that I will probably be gone at the next meeting. I'll be out of town. So just for your acknowledgement. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. And Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone as well that attended the Veterans Cemetery Open House. I was there representing the city, but I was really pleased to see that we had representation from Senators Cantwell and Murray's offices, Congressman Newhouse's office. I believe that our state representatives, April Connor, came in person. Nikki Torres was there. I think we had County Commissioner Michael Alvarez was there. A lot of local turnout, which was really beneficial. And I did a quick head count. I think there were over a hundred people in that room at one time. Not sure what fire code allows there, chief, but okay, we're good. But it was standing room only. And I personally, as a veteran, I want to see this happen too. All of you know, we have several veterans serving on city council and people that wish they were veterans as well. But I, I want to see this happen. So this is a good thing. It was a good meeting. I will be attending, as Councilmember Moran mentioned, the Association of Washington Cities Conference. It takes place between June eighteenth and June twenty-third. I'll be there. Councilmember Fettow will be there. And of course, Councilmember Fettow did put his name in as a candidate for the Board of Directors along with Mayor Barajas, but also a council member from Waitsburg. Oh, you're right, council member. But along with a council member from Waitsburg. So it's going to be a three-way fight. But I'd like to see Councilmember Fettow get elected as well. I think having a good representation from our city is extremely important. And other than that, yeah, but we'll wait till that happens. Other than that, I appreciate everyone's support of the Veterans Cemetery movement. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for sitting in for me the last couple of meetings when I chaired the ECA conference here for New Nuclear. Appreciate that. I, I wanted to come and make the statement that I did. It was very important to me about the incident that we had here in the city. And then thank you for giving me a two-week vacation on the coast, which was, was, it was great. You guys had crummy weather. We had two weeks of sunshine, blue sky, except for two days of a little bit of drizzle in Newport. So that was good. Council, keep your eyes open for what the outcome is of the next meeting. We may not have a quorum, so we will address that and get back to you. And meanwhile, that'll, that may give Jessica a little better opportunity to go to Olympia and knock on the door of PDC and maybe get some clarifying answers for you. So with that, with the doors locked, we, we have no executive session this evening. So I will go ahead and conclude this meeting at seven oh seven. Thank you, council. Thank you, citizens for participating this evening as well as by virtual.